Good evening and welcome to the council meeting of Monday, June seventeenth. Review and approve council agenda. I just have one thing under consent agenda item L. I'd like to add Matthew Lindstrom as a seasonal employee.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve five, six, nineteen city council meeting minutes. Item B, approve five, twenty, nineteen city council meeting minutes. Item C, approve change order number one for Rivers Edge Park Phase Three landscaping. Item D, approve change order number four for Rivers Edge Park Phase Three. Item E, appoint Ryan Gruber to fire captain. Item F, approve twenty, twenty census resolution. Item G, approve addendums to JPA with Sherburne County for the regional criminal tracking and analysis. Item H, approve part-time community service officer appointments to Shay Rosa and Gabriel Lynn. Item I, authorize hire two full-time police officers and approve expiration of eligibility list for twelve thirty-one nineteen. Item J, approve resolution for City of Wake Park's participation in the Minnesota Council on Local Results and Innovations Comprehensive Performance Management Program. Item K, approve contract with Jay DeFries Consulting Firm. Item L, approve hiring Alex Dahlbeck to Public Works seasonal worker position and Matthew Lindstrom to the same. Item M, approve motel hotel license for Silver Leaf Hilton Garden Inn. Item N, approving allowing city administrator to temporarily appoint public work seasonal workers. Phew, that's it.
I'd like to pull INJ.
All right, anything else? Somebody want to move to approve everything except INJ? I'll approve.
To approve everything but INJ?
I'll second. Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Mike?
I pulled the wrong, wait a second here.
Authorized hire of two full-time police officers is I.
Oh, yep. Okay, yep, I got it right. Okay, for I, I would like to recommend the hiring of Jeffrey Egert and Peter Moore. Jeffrey Egert, uh, starting date would be as of July eighth, Peter Moore on July ninth, in the condition that all proper employment screening is done and okayed.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And J?
J, I just, I'd like a little bit further explanation of J. This is kind of the first time I think this has come up.
Oh, we've had it before.
Have we had?
Yeah. It's really a program that the state offers, um, and it's a way for us, um, uh, to be able to, um, not have to be concerned with, um, levy limits, um, and it gives the community back fourteen cents per capita, um, if we do not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. So what we do is we put a survey out on our, um, website that talks about these performance measures, um, that are included in the resolution, and those really look at your services that you provide, and then you just report those results by the end of the year. You give them input during your public hearing process in the budget, and that's really what it's entailed for. So you have to pass this resolution annually to be able to participate and do that survey, and so that allows us to get back fourteen cents per capita.
I just don't remember doing this before for some reason.
Yeah, we've, we have.
So, all right, I'll move to approve, J.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda items. Item A, consider revoking the hotel license of Astaria Hotel. The license holder for the hotel is Sardu, Sardu, Sardu WP LLC. This is a hearing, I need a motion to open the hearing at six thirty-five.
Motion to open it. Did Vic make the motion?
Yeah, Vic made the motion to open it.
Second.
Do you need a second?
Yep. Mike second. All right, Gordon?
Thank you. Shauna, we, of course, this is being recorded by video, is that?
Yep. Video and audio.
Is it also? Okay, thank you. Uh, I've been requested on behalf of the city administrator to initiate a process for a hearing regarding the, uh, potential revocation of a hotel motel license for Astaria Hotel and the company that owns it. They were sent notice on May thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. I think all of you had received a copy via email the same day that they were served as well. The, uh, a little bit of history which I think is significant for the record, there was a lot of problems at this particular location before this gentleman became the owner. And I think, as you're aware, we had police calls, gunfire out in the parking lot, many, many police-related incidents. The City of Wake Park then sought to obtain permission first from Stearns County, then later from the Minnesota Legislature, where we are unique of having the ability to license motels, hotels. I think we're the only one, city in the state of Minnesota that has that right, and the particular reason why this, uh, right or this, uh, ability to do that was this particular location. Now, that's not the fault of the current owner, but it gives some history of this property. And if I understand correctly, Mayor Miller and, uh, city administrator Johnson met with then the new owner, recited some of the problems that had been at this property, and were assured that this was going to be a new, a new management, new ownership, things were going to be cleaned up, and off we go. Unfortunately, we're here tonight considering the potential revocation of the, uh, license. As a part of the City of Wake Park's enforcement, they engaged Stearns County for aspects of inspection of hotels, motels because of health and safety and certain items that were within the expertise of Stearns County. So we have Jane Knott here tonight, and as I understand, her supervisor. We have Jeff Howe, who's our city, uh, building inspector. We got Pat Grossback and Jason Thompson from the Police Department who have also been involved in the investigation, and you've seen some of their reports and, and some of the issues. I would, uh, as, as part of the record, I'll give to Carla a copy of the notice which includes attachments and a reference to about six hundred videos and photographs which show the condition that was found by the building inspector, the Police Department, and Stearns County about the conditions at this particular hotel. The, uh, to kind of, and, and I want to emphasize one thing because I, I've had conversations with the attorney representing the, uh, hotel licensee saying, well, you haven't gone through the proper steps because if this is nuisance-related cause by the Police Department, you've got to go through an incremental three meeting steps. And I told him that we've included these calls just as a point of reference, and that it is one of the problems out there, but it is not the sole basis or the basis for the potential revocation. The, uh, what, as I understand, what brought attention to this particular property was a call from some relatives from Texas who said, you got to see the conditions at this motel about what these people live in. And it relates to, as I understand, a leaking roof in the east building and resulting mold that these people live in. And, uh, we can have more specifics with some of these people that had been asked to be here tonight, but what was found is that the roof leaked badly, there's extreme mold, it's a health issue, there were fire detectors with batteries out, it was inadequately prepared in case of a fire. It appears that there have been people who have lived there months upon months, which is a zoning code violation. This, as you may recall, when you enacted this ordinance, there's a seven-day stay here, so you can't make it your apartment building. This is zoned for motel and hotel, and management didn't enforce that. There are also issues about videotape where the Police Department went and said, where's your videotape? Because they're obligated, I believe, for ninety days to have videotape because it also then records who's come in, who's come out, and then that's something that can be verified with the hotel register, see if those people are really there. They didn't have it. They had nine days of videotape, so they failed on, on that count, they failed on a number of health and safety issues, they failed on fire code issues, building code issues, and, and that's basically what set forth. And so if, Jane, are you able to come up and just give a summary of what you found when we went to the property?
From my aspect, I can ask.
Perfect. That's all I'm asking.
Good evening, I'm Jane Canata, I'm a health inspector with Stearns County. Um, I initially did a walkthrough of the east building, um, with, um, Jim Howe, uh, basically helped him post all the rooms. Uh, the city had initially been, um, notified of the complaint on the east building. I believe my supervisor was called as well, um, but they had the authority to close that building when they found what the conditions were. So then the following week, I went through with, with Jim and helped him post all the rooms, and, you know, looked at the condition of the rooms in that building myself. Um, after that, I actually then went and did a full inspection of the west building because that facility is also on my, um, inspection list for summer anyway, so that way we'd kind of know where everything stood with both buildings, um, from our standpoint and environmental services. Um, I don't know if you got the inspection report, but, I mean, it's fairly lengthy, lengthy, but I'll just kind of reiterate what Gordy said, um, you know, there were fire extinguishers that were outdated, they have to be serviced annually, they were last serviced in twenty seventeen. Um, the east building, of course, yeah, there was sheet rock falling in, terrible mold conditions in a lot of the rooms. I mean, a lot of the rooms, we probably should have had respirators on to even be in them because the smell was, was terrible. Um, a lot of the rooms had smoke detectors that were either covered up or the batteries weren't in and weren't working, so from a fire safety standpoint, there were a lot of concerns. We found a lot of those concerns with smoke detectors in the, the west building as well. Um, so just to kind of reiterate what I had, uh, to summarize, um, it seems like a lot of the linens aren't necessarily serviced weekly like they should be as well, especially with people we talked to that live there or have been there for an extended period of time. So that's one of the concerns. Um, the facility had not completed, um, sex trafficking training, which is a new requirement, um, with new legislation just last August. Uh, all the staff and employees have to be trained on sex trafficking, they have to have posters posted, and they have to watch some training in a video and have, um, a training log and documentation of that. Since then, I did send that information to the manager so that their employees could, um, fulfill that requirement. Again, fire extinguishers needing to be serviced, um, very big structural issues, which I will defer to the building inspectors on, on those aspects because they are the building officials, we do not enforce building code, so we're just looking at it from our lodging ordinance and a health and safety perspective. Um, one of the rooms in the west building has been occupied for a long period of time. Uh, the gentleman had, you know, it was kind of like a hoarding situation, he had six cats, the ammonia smell was very, very strong, so that, again, from a public health standpoint is an issue. Uh, when a room gets in that condition, it's hard to tell as well if there's rodent and pest and that kind of thing as well, which, of course, would impact, um, neighboring rooms. So that was one of the concerns we found in the west building. Um, and then just miscellaneous things that weren't working, so all that has been documented. Um, we basically would just be looking at this from our lodging ordinance perspective. So, you know, if the gentleman completes everything he needs to from our requirement and meets all the City of Wake Park requirements for building code, we would work with them on, on getting that east building back open, but not until everything has been completed.
One quick question for, on the mold problem. The mold problem, from what I understand, can be airborne as well as just on the wall. So that would also affect that whole building if it's that full of mold, that, that particular problem could become airborne throughout, which would affect anybody in that addition?
That's definitely a possibility, I mean, with, depending on the air handling equipment in there, um, and we did talk about that, but what we basically recommended, which is what the city recommended as well, was that the facility work with a mold remediation company on evaluating that to determine, you know, what the levels of mold are. Um, of course, if you've got water and roof leaking, you're going to have mold because there's mold spores everywhere in the environment, so it would be a matter of fixing that issue, um, tearing the walls and materials out so you can see where, where the water has, you know, made its way through and where the mold is growing, but we would defer to a mold remediation company to, you know, basically tell us that that's been addressed. Mold is a tough thing because some people are extremely sensitive, some are not, but of course, you know, you can't have mold in, in a building, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff Howe, our building inspector. Jeff, would you come up and, uh, just briefly summarize? I should tell you that the council and, uh, the building owner have had copies of your reports, but anything you can do to kind of summarize and fill in details?
Uh, well, we became aware of this when we got a phone call saying that, uh, and we got a phone call from a tenant there saying that, uh, there was a lot of mold in place, and she was trying, and her kids and her family were sick. So we, uh, we went over, well, actually then, then we got the phone call from the relative from Texas, and then we were sent some pictures, and the pictures were pretty astounding as far as the, uh, the condition of, of the building. So we went over there, we went through the building, uh, the empty rooms, and, uh, yeah, there's, there's, you could see the paint bubbling off the wall, you could see with water behind it, you could see a lot on the east side of the east wing or the east building, a lot of sheet rock down on the second floor. Uh, so I, I came back and I called the owner, we had a discussion. Uh, I went back over there and there was fourteen rooms, we didn't go into any occupied rooms the first time we were over there. So the second time we went over there, that same day, that afternoon, uh, I went back through the fourteen rooms that were occupied. Out of those fourteen rooms, four rooms, I could not physically see any mold or any water damage. Otherwise, the other ten rooms, out of the fourteen rooms that were occupied, ten of them actually had problems. Uh, so at that point, I issued a letter saying that I felt the building was uninhabitable, it was a threat to health, and, uh, ordered the people that were in there out of there. Uh, apparently, that probably didn't happen until we went back and posted each room, uh, the following week. But of course, timing's everything, this happened on a Friday, so it's, uh, limited time to re, respond to it, but that's, that's the nutshell. We actually went back there and it, uh, that, the, the roof was, was very bad, and it's the whole building, in fact, you walked into some rooms, you, you literally had a hard time breathing, you had to get out. So it's, it's, uh, pretty bad conditions, I've never seen a building quite that full of mold before.
Thank you.
Who wants to talk?
Pat Grossback? From the Police Department? Good evening. Uh, Pat Grossback Patrol Supervisor with the Police Department. Um, there isn't a whole lot that I can add, reference the building inspection portion of it since that's not our, our general area. We, we were asked to go over there initially with them to, um, just provide some security while they did the inspection because they weren't sure what they were going to get into once they got over there.
Can you speak up a little bit into the mic?
Sure. And so I had assigned a couple of officers to go over to assist, um, and then they filled out some reports on the conditions as they saw them. We also asked the officers and one of the investigators to go over there, uh, the other times with them in order to also, one, for security, but two, to help document, um, since we have better access with cameras and the storage for that, so they went down there and took photographs and some videos. Uh, one of our investigators went down there and was able to speak with some of the tenants that were still living in the west building as it was open, and one of the individuals that he talked to had been living there for two years, um, and had made that his permanent address. Uh, the other ones had been there a shorter time, um, but still were longer than they were supposed to have been there. The person that had been there for two years, um, he indicated that the room was so bad that he had to leave because his eyes were burning from the smell from the cats, and that you couldn't even get through there with, because there wasn't anything, there weren't paths to go through there. Um, prior with that, I can tell you that these aren't new conditions, um, having worked and gone down there for several calls over the last couple of years, it's, it's pretty standard to find several people in a room that's only with two beds, it'd be four or five people that were staying there, um, which was not uncommon. Um, the conditions of them have always been in poor condition, and we haven't really done much with management with, other than saying they can't stay there because they're not registered and they would do that. Several times, we went down there asking for video, and they either couldn't figure out how to work the system, or for some reason, it wasn't recording that day when we needed to get, uh, video to help us with different criminal cases. So again, this has been something that's been ongoing, it's not something that obviously just occurred overnight.
Just one follow-up question. I, I understand that, that actually the school bus stops there and picks up children.
That's correct.
Which would indicate that this is not just a seven-day stay.
Yes, the, the school district is required to, if a student doesn't have transportation, they're required to provide transportation, so the parent would have to contact the school district, indicating that that was their address, and then the school district would then send a bus over there to pick them up to get them to the proper schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer Thompson, I don't mean to ignore you, is there anything else you could add that Officer Grossback didn't mention?
No.
Okay, thank you. That, that basically concludes things. I know we have a lawyer representing the building owner who, I'm sure wishes to address it.
All right. Thanks, Gordon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Dicker, I'm an attorney, um, down in Minneapolis, don't hold that against me. Um, I'm here tonight with Mr. Himant Bhakta, who is the owner of Sardu WP LLC. Um, I think it obvious, we don't want the license revoked, uh, we understand that there are issues and problems with the property, and my client is committed to resolving them, has been working on the issues. Since acquiring the property in twenty sixteen, um, he undertook a major renovation before the property was opened, he's cooperated with the police, I think, the, I, I believe they will, will tell you, and we can call them back, uh, to verify it, but the number of calls has gone down dra, gone down drastically, that, uh, the, the problems with the, the use of the property have been significantly reduced. Uh, I'm mindful of Mr. Hansmeyer's comment that, uh, the police calls are not a grounds that are being vigorously asserted, but they certainly have been asserted as cause, and aside from the, the process, the, the fact of the matter is that there have only been two violations of the ordinance in terms of nuisance calls, um, since last November. Um, not that there aren't nuisance calls, but the exhibit that's been, it was included in Mr. Hansmeyer's, um, package is somewhat misleading, and I, I don't mean to take a slam at him, but that's a list of all of the calls. Well, most of those calls are legitimate calls, and obviously, as a hotel operator, uh, Mr. Bhakta and his employees can't not call the police if there's a cause for it. Um, you know, we're dealing with more transient populations, there are issues, and, and I think he's been a good citizen and has worked vigorously to reduce that problem. I understand there are regular annual meetings with the police, he gets notices so that he can monitor the situation, so, um, I think that situation, one, there is no grounds for revocation based on, on the nuisance calls, I think that's essentially been acknowledged since there, uh, Mr. Hansmeyer's is saying that's not a major cause here. But it is, that is an issue that I, I hope and believe is, is under control. The mold problem, we believe, is a relatively new problem. There were water damage that was identified by the owner last fall. He attempted to let a contract, um, in November and was advised by the contractor that it would be inappropriate and it, not able to do the work over the winter, and it was best to wait till, uh, the spring after the winter season to do the repair work. Um, the fact of the ongoing roof damage over the winter contributed to, certainly can, certainly contributed to, maybe caused the mold problem. I'm not aware of there being a mold issue before, um, the, the, this winter, um, so it's likely, we think, that, that it certainly was enhanced by, by not having the work done in the fall, but that's what the contractor told them. Um, the contract has been let, um, there was some timeframe, uh, in which the permit was applied for and not received, it's been received, the work is, I believe, Mr. Bhakta will testify, is eighty percent done. Um, it's expensive work, and he is happy to do it to stabilize the property. He has also engaged a, um, local remediation service, uh, service master to, uh, develop a remediation plan. There is a proposal received, he is ready to let that contract as soon as the roof work is completed. I'm sure you can understand, you have to stabilize the wet condition before you can start the mold remediation, so there's a logical progress that's, that's being deployed here. Um, sorry. The other compliance issues, I, I don't mean to be dismissive of them at all, we, we take these issues seriously. Um, there has been some inattention or not sufficient attention to management, um, and Mr. Bhakta will acknowledge that he's had some long-term tenants. Um, I think he was probably not aware of the zoning ordinance, I'm not saying that's an excuse by any means, um, but there is one tenant who's been there for about sixteen months, is our understanding. Um, again, not trying to make excuses, that tenant has been told his, um, he will not be allowed to re-lease, um, these are weekly leases, um, arrangements, so he will be out, I believe, by tomorrow, um, and Mr. Bhakta is prepared to move forward, you know, in full compliance, um, and not have long-term tenants. The issue with the videotape is, is sort of astounding to my client, um, there is a videotape system in place, it works, uh, it is recorded. So far as he knows, there is, you know, that they maintain the system, uh, for the ninety days required by the ordinance. I, I think the officer said, I, quite accurately, it was probably a, a question of the employee not being mindful or not being aware of how to operate it. Again, not to make excuses, but to address that issue, Mr. Bhakta is prepared to hire new management, um, and impose and establish training procedures so that all employees have access to and are trained on videotape and all the compliance issues so that there will be better management. I, I don't want to minimize any of these issues, obviously, a mold infestation is a, a serious health and safety issue, my client is working aggressively to remediate it. Um, obviously, compliance with the law is an important issue, and he is committed to being a good neighbor, a good citizen, and a good business member in this community, and wants to work with the city and this council to find a path going forward. With respect, uh, revocation at this point would be an extreme and, I think, unwarranted response to circumstances when you have a business owner who has already made substantial investments in this property, who has improved the property substantially, who has improved the operations, who's demonstrated a commitment to making the place safe and, and sound, to reducing the police complaints, to reducing the nuisance calls, reducing the nine-one-one calls, who has taken the remedial steps necessary to address these critical issues, and is prepared to do whatever it takes to make that, that right. Um, so my respectful suggestion and request of the council is that you not revoke the, the license today. Um, my suggestion is that we work with city staff to remit, to assure a plan of remediation and further training for employees so that there is no backsliding, um, and work with us to move forward cooperatively and preserve this employer and this facility and this community. And Mr. Bhakta is certainly willing to speak to you and to testify as to the specific issues, but that, that is our view and our position.
All right, this is a hearing, so if, if he wants to speak, that's fine, if he doesn't, that's fine. Uh, if you want to ask any questions, anybody, that's fine, uh, otherwise, we can close the hearing and then the council will discuss it, so.
I'm not a good speaker, but, good evening, everybody. If anybody have a question, I will be willing to answer, I think. And as far as the work goes, the roof is getting done, I've been in touch with Jeff, Mr. Howe. We also having, uh, some other work getting started tomorrow in the room, and we have a contract with, uh, SMS, the, the mold people, licensed mold remover, almost eighty thousand dollars. So if everything goes okay, they're willing to start tomorrow morning. If we're allowed to do the work and allowed to operate the business as soon as we compliance with everything. We're allowed to do the work and allow to operate the business as soon as we compliance with everything that required to do it. The other thing I have to do is change my management. That's another problem. I don't live here. I only come once or twice a week for hour or two hours. And that's been another problem. The video is, it's not a tape system anymore. It's a hard drive. The manager doesn't know how to operate. I talked to him too. So it's always available to review. So what we can do is have one of the officer, we could have to give him a code. So whenever they want to come and look at the video, they can, they can look at the video. It's on the hard drive. Nowadays, there's nobody have videotape. So it's, it's record every day. The manager never told me that the police officer came looking for a video and I was unaware of it, that they came and asked for videos or a tape. So. So as soon as everything gets done, I'll have to change my management and bring new people if that has to be done.
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
This ordinance that we're speaking about, did you receive a copy of it prior to when you signed it and sent in your fee for the year?
I didn't get it.
Did you? Our new ordinance was sent to all owners such as yourself.
Yeah.
Did you receive it and you signed it and you returned it back to us? Is that correct?
He received a copy of that and then signed back his application.
Right.
Yes.
So he understood what was on that ordinance. I would understand.
The long term, yeah, I was not aware of it that it was only for seven days. There's a lot of commercial people come to work in the summertime and they stay for three, four weeks. Sometimes they stay for a couple of months. Depends on the project. Now, I grew up in this business, been in hotel, running motels for thirty-eight years. I, this is the first time that I'm hearing that I cannot rent a room to somebody more than seven days. So what's the definition of cannot have extended stay more than seven days? That has to be, I didn't know. I know it was there. There's one guy still there for almost sixteen to eighteen months. He's moving out tomorrow. He's the one with the cat. But as far as like seven days, no more than seven days, I didn't know.
Let me ask you a question, sir.
Sure.
I assume that the ordinance that was provided is the city ordinance concerning hotels, not the zoning ordinance.
That's correct. And in that ordinance, it, the, that definition is in there for the, for the amount of time.
All right, anybody else got any questions? Otherwise, we can close this hearing. If, do you have any more questions? I don't want to shut you off. So if you want to ask somebody, go ahead.
Well, can I just make, make one statement? Your, your position was that should we move to revoke the license would be extreme. My position would be that accountability is very important. And the conditions that you've described is not something that happened overnight. Uh, we put people at risk. We put children at risk. Um, and revocation in this case, as we consider that, in my mind, would not be an extreme kind of, of response. Uh, would be an appropriate response and it would be holding the party appropriately accountable for lack of action. So I just wanted to take, um, issue with your, uh, position that that would be an extreme action on our part.
Well, to be clear, Mr. Schultz, I'm not arguing against accountability.
I understand that.
And, you know, the mold issue was only brought to their attention officially with the inspection a few weeks ago. And whether, you know, our view is that the work to repair the underlying problem, the roof was already contracted, was already underway. He was attempting to address it. Could there have been better ways to address it in the short term perhaps? But accountability also goes with notice and, and fairness. And again, my point is you have a business owner who has already invested in this community, who's made major renovations, who's working to improve the property for three years. And it's in that context, it, it, obviously it's your call, not mine, and what's extreme. And I res- hear you and I respect your, your view and your point. Our view is that it would be fair to give him a chance to remediate these problems.
Mike, thank you.
Thanks. Gordon?
Just a, a final comment on the potential actions you can take. You can take no action, which would then leave the, the hotel license in effect. Or if you just revoke the license without comment, the ordinance says that, uh, the owner cannot reapply for a one-year period. The other option you have is revoking the license for a, I'm sorry, for a specific period of time, you know, like month, three months, six months. And then saying at that point, provided the owner has complied with all of the requirements of Stearns County Building Inspector, Fire Inspector, et cetera, et cetera. Then they are entitled to reapply for the license and show compliance and then the license could be reissued. If that makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, somebody want to move to close the hearing?
So move.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the hearing is closed at seven oh six.
I'd like to make a recommendation here. I feel that, uh, with the amount of what's going on and what's happening, I'd like to revoke the license for a period of ninety days. With the nine-month probationary period, which as in each of those nine months, the buildings shall be inspected monthly by Stearns County Health, our building and our police department. And I think that is fair. The revocation will be in effect as of five PM on the eighteenth of this month.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second.
For the motion, the motion should say that the license we revoked at five PM on June eighteenth and on September eighteenth, which is three months.
Be eligible.
Eligible to reapply for a license. And for the next nine months, probation period basically, saying that Stearns County Health, uh, Wade Park Building Officials, Police, Fire would inspect those at least, at least monthly. And that cost would be borne by the property owner.
For the inspections.
With the, for the cost of the inspections.
Is that the clarifica- it, that part wasn't added to the original motion? I want to make sure that that's clear.
Add that on.
Yeah, it's an amendment to the motion, sure.
That, is that where we're at, Gordon? I mean, what, what did I miss on that?
I have seconded.
Yeah, Frank did.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Soon as Mike got done, I seconded the motion.
Yeah, but, but I, but I have included everybody, everything I want to say in that? Okay. Is there a motion for the amendment?
Yes, or well.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the amendment to be added.
No, I'll second that.
All right, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I think discussion first. I think that the revocation for, uh, three months is, is much too short. I think we need to do a six-month revocation. Um, this needs to, um, bring the point home that we're very serious about enforcing our ordinance, um, that the violations have been egregious and that three months is just not adequate. I, I can't support a three months.
Just a clarification, right now you are making a motion on the amendment to the motion that you're referring to. I just want to, just for clarification purposes.
I appreciate that. I don't hear that well.
No.
The amendment's okay?
The amendment on it is to have the cost of the inspections be borne by the.
For a period of nine months. All in favor? I, I test of the amendment. The original motion now is to revoke the license for a period of, uh, basically three months. June eighteenth to September eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
No, my position hasn't changed. Three months is too short.
My, my concern is when, when it is shut down and they're making the repairs, that nobody is still living there. Because I think the last time there was some issues when it was closed or changing hands or being remodeled, there was still tenants there. So someone had physically blocked that driveway off to monitor traffic in that parking lot. So that's a little side concern of mine that it has to be vacated while these repairs are being done.
Right, yep. You know, and I feel the same way and I think, you know, uh, giving you ninety days, that might be a little short, but this is a serious matter. So if you have all these people lined up, I, I would feel that they.
They should be able to make the repairs and hopefully run a nice, clean operation.
I think there's enough here. I, I have a, I have a very difficult time believing that you didn't know there was mold in there. You weren't cleaning rooms if you didn't know there was.
Or the ceiling coming down. That, that's.
That doesn't happen overnight.
Leaking for a long period of time to bring drywall down, so.
So I, I, I think, you know.
Invex probably right. Nine months probably ain't enough, but, uh, well, or ninety days.
Three months.
Ninety days is just.
I, I think, I think it's very lenient. I, I, the way it sounds to me is the whole east building is not inhabitable anyway. Ten out of the fourteen rooms that were inspected by our building official or, or police were, said that ten of them out of fourteen weren't, were no good. So I mean, you don't have any rooms that are any, I don't know what rooms are left that you can even put people in. So I, yeah, I'd want it shut down completely. And just because the ninety days goes by, doesn't mean you get your license back. You need to reapply for that license. And you have to, everybody in this room, on this side especially, has to sign off on that, including our fire official. So, uh, if it's not done in, by September eighteenth, you don't, you know, don't come back and ask for a license. If it's not done till December nineteenth, don't come back and, you know, I mean, when it's done, when you're ready to reopen that as a respectable, clean living space for a hotel, then come back. Actually, I have a motion on the floor in a second right now, so.
The hearing is closed.
You know, I, yeah, go ahead. I mean, I, I don't think anything's going to change, so.
No, and I'm, I'm not going to argue for that, but I, I would suggest that the, the revocation go into effect in a few days, not in twenty-four hours. There are guests in the west building, which is not, does not have the mold issues. I think it's just disruptive for them to give them twenty-four hours. So I, I would ask, respectfully suggest that the council defer the effective date for one week so that he can get his.
I will not change the date. I have a motion second to close it tomorrow night at five o'clock, so.
Any other discussion?
The amendments, right?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Passes four to one. All right, item number B, consider the revocation of Q and S massage license. Gordon?
A notice was sent on June sixth, two thousand nineteen pursuant to our massage ordinance to the massage facility license holder, Juan Shao, J U A N S H A O. And we sent, uh, both by certified and first-class mail to the facility and to the two addresses which Ms. Shao has listed on her license application. The, kind of the short story is.
Hey Gordon, let me, let me just shut you off real quick. This hearing's open at, uh, seven fourteen.
I guess we're open. But in, in any, but, but kind of the short story is the, as a result of some, uh, police investigation, it was determined that there were improper acts, sexual acts of nature that were being conducted on the premises as well as there were unlicensed, uh, massage therapists who were working there, which is in violation of our ordinance. A copy of this packet was sent, I think, to the entire council. See if you've had a chance to give it. As part of the record, I've, uh, given, uh, a copy to Carla to maintain as part of the record. I had conversations and discussions with the attorney representing the licensee and we want to include a copy of his letter to me saying they would not appear tonight. They would not contest the, uh, revocation of the license. So I won't go into any other detail. It's, uh, I, my recommendation is that you would move to revoke the license as set forth in notice of public hearing.
All right, thanks. Somebody want to move to close the hearing?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. The hearing's closed at seven fifteen.
I'll make a recommendation to revoke the license for this business, um, massage parlor.
That's a motion. I'll second it.
And revoke it permanently.
One year.
One year is all we.
But you have the authority to do.
Not to exceed one year.
Second.
One year.
And you seconded Vic? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. All right, on to bigger, better and nicer things. Item C, preliminary and final plat- plat for Day Lily. Thanks, guys.
Mayor Miller, members of the council, uh, this is a pretty straightforward request. It is, uh, in the vicinity of the, uh, Asteria Motel was just in question. Uh, currently vacant land owned by Linda Kramer's trust, uh, between Asteria and Viking Electric on the northern side of First Street South. The request is from Day Lily Spa Salon, who wants to, uh, put a new building in that location, split off a portion of that vacant lot uh, for a single lot, single block parcel, um, approximately an acre in size. Uh, it would leave room for additional development, uh, adjacent as well. I've not seen any building, uh, concepts or renderings at this point for the, the building itself, but we really wouldn't need to see anything necessarily unless it's a, um, some form of zoning action, a variance or conditional use permit that they would need, uh, to get, um, otherwise we're likely to only see it at, at time of standard building permit. Uh, the property has not been previously platted, so that's, that's what's driving the request for the plat. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Uh, because it has not been previously platted, we require the payment in lieu of the Parkland dedication based on five percent of the unimproved value. The payment in lieu amount comes out to a recommended ten thousand eight hundred and seven dollars for that, uh, that parcel. And that has been, uh, recommended in that amount by the park board as well. So I, I'd recommend approval, uh, based on, for the prelim- preliminary plat based on two conditions. Uh, number one, that the property may be subject to development agreement, uh, prior to commencement of construction based on review and determination of, by city staff. And number two, the, uh, payment in lieu of the Parkland dedication in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and seven dollars must be paid to the City of Wade Park prior to affixing our signatures on the plat. That being said, I would recommend approval of the, uh, preliminary and final plats.
John, I got a quick question. Where is that one acre parcels? Uh, is it on the?
It's between, it's between the Asteria Hotel and Viking Electric, right, right in the middle.
So it'd be a sliver of a property in there?
It's about the, the entirety of the property there. If you, uh, just about, just about half.
It's a good chunk.
Big enough so that can be developed?
Yeah, there would be room for a d- additional development at a later time. We'd have to see that.
The one acre that they're plating, taking off of this.
Yeah, we would have to see that, uh, any future development.
They're plating the whole thing right now.
Yeah, but I thought you were going to take one acre off of it?
No, it, the whole thing isn't being plated.
That is just one acre.
It's just taking, taking an acre off of it.
Oh, the whole thing is one acre?
No, the, the whole property is larger. They're taking the, uh, they're taking a portion of that property right now.
You're plating the whole thing?
No, the, just, just, an acre parcel is being platted off of it.
Okay, so it's, it's, the square that you're showing us here is the whole piece of property.
The, the, the square in blue that's on the map, that's the whole property. Cause that's, that's what we base the notice on.
They're taking the east or west piece of that?
Uh, the eastern piece, I.
The eastern piece.
Yep, eastern piece, I believe.
Towards Viking Electric.
Yep, and that would leave the remainder portion for future development.
Okay.
I, I actually got crossed up on that myself, just because.
So the one acre is where?
On the east side of it.
On the east side of it?
This piece of it.
Yep, I believe so.
It would be big enough to put, so we don't fall into the same problem as his neighbor with that little piece there. It's plenty.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's big enough.
Falls in the second street corridor?
Yeah, and we, we did, we did resize the, if you recall, some time ago, we.
Two and a half acres.
We backed down the sizes in that area. So there, there would still be room for something on, something pretty nice on that, on that remainder lot. I specifically had that conversation with the, uh, with that, with the applicants and their, their real estate folks that, um, just so they're not inadvertently backing themselves into a corner here, that they, they may want to configure in such a way that leaves that room.
All right, consul, any other wishes on that one?
Yeah, I'd, I'd move to recommend the approval of the preliminary and final plat of Day Lily.
With?
With the condition.
With the condition?
With the condition, yes.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. All right, outdoor warning signs, chief?
Yes, uh, mayor and members of the council, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, Public Works Director Schlenz and I took a lap around the, the city and um investigating possible locations for additional outdoor warning sirens. And um the locations that we came up with that we thought would be uh good, uh, possible locations to consider was one being a, some higher ground in the uh upper Underville area on uh old uh highway road north, uh west of Archer Daniels, out kind of towards the, the interstate. Um, there's some, there's some high ground that would, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk about the, the map here in a second that uh we thought would uh maybe be a good possible location. Um, we talked about at a work session previously that there was, seemed to be a gap in coverage for what I refer to as the, the, the west end of Wade Park, the Grand Depot area. Uh, as well as the southern end of our city, out on Granite View Road, um County Road Six area. And we also found a location uh roughly in the twenty-three hundred block of Granite View Road. There is a um, a, a, a tar road that I, I think the long-term plans for the county is to be a south entrance to Quarry Park. Uh, so in that area. And I gave uh those two locations to uh Dan McCoy at Granite Electronics, who's, who helps service our existing sirens to develop a, a sound uh plan map for Wade Park, given those new siren locations. And included in your packet was a aerial map that shows by adding those two sirens, we uh in effect are providing, uh, I would submit very good coverage, or at least good coverage to the entire geography of Wade Park, including the, the area of St. Joe Township that was annexed a few years ago. So uh when we looked at, um, we do not get much um coverage at all from the Rockville sirens. We do get a fair amount of overlap from the St. Cloud sirens, particularly the ones that are, um, bear with me here. The, uh, there is a St. Cloud siren near Westwood School, there's one uh by the V A. Um, there is uh one in the Industrial Park West, which is Sockview Drive, the Heritage Center area, as well as the one near uh Boulder Ridge. When you look at uh St. Cloud's sound um, uh map or siren map, there is a benefit to the city of Wade Park as well for those sirens, so adding two new ones to the west and to the south, uh, we are covering our city very well for outdoor uh warning sirens. There is currently money in the budget for one, the cost to purchase a siren is about fourteen thousand dollars. The, the cost to wire and install is, is, is anywhere from five to six, so we're roughly talking about twenty thousand dollars per siren. I, I'm proposing that, and asking the council to consider um the approval to install one in the um upper Underville area on Old Highway Road North. And to also, at the same time, consider uh the possibility of adding a second one uh in the area of Granite View Road, you know, that's southern entrance to what is Quarry Park. Adding those two, like I said, will, will provide some really good coverage to our city. Then um commencing in, in twenty twenty, as we start planning for the twenty twenty budget, there are some of our existing sirens that are um over twenty years old. Probably the first one that should be considered to be replaced is the one on uh Sixth Avenue Division. And then the next one probably would be the one out by Belclaire Acres. It is a, a refurbished siren that we purchased from the city of New Ulm and restored. I would not advocate for relocating that siren now. I would like to see that siren moved, it's kind of to the north of Belclaire, I'd like to see it moved just south of, of Belclaire. But rather than relocate an existing old siren, look to plan for future years to replace um some of our older sirens, that being one of them. And if, if, should that be approved, uh, again, I would look to find a location to the south of, of Belclaire that would again give the southern portion of our city uh, um, better coverage. But uh, like I said, there is money in the budget for one siren right now. To purchase two would require um going into our reserves. And, and I guess as, uh, wearing my emergency manager hat right now, I, I would ask the council to consider allowing us to do that, to add two sirens instead of just the one.
What's the timeframe on those, chief, if we ordered them, let's say we, tomorrow they, you said told Granite City or whatever, get them, when, when do they begin to start?
Four to six weeks, I think we could get the sirens here, then it would take some time to install. Other costs would be to, we need to purchase a, uh, about a sixty foot pole, I don't know how much those cost exactly. I would think they're relatively insignificant compared to the cost of the siren. But then there's a wiring that goes with that, we, we probably engage a um electrical contractor to, to wire. And, and that's where that, that cost between the roughly fourteen thousand to purchase the siren and the twenty i- is to wire, install and those things.
By the first of September, they should be up and running?
I, I think that's realistic.
Council, any questions?
If, if we were to go with a extra one, would we take that out of reserves? Or could we take that out if there is any money left at the end of the year?
It's the same thing.
Just gets paid back.
Yeah.
Probably to pay ball.
There's, there's money that we do set aside annually, that's.
Yeah, you know, once in a while.
Yeah, I already talked to Key.
Things do come under budget, we do have a few dollars left.
That's true, you're right, but it's the same kind of a thing, it's just, it, it's an unallocated expense, so we, we, when you do that in the middle of the year, you're taking it out of the reserves, because you're assuming that your budget's going to hit that zero at the end of the year. Meaning your budgets and your expenditures and revenues will match.
Lucky once in a while now.
Yeah.
And council, I also, I, I, and I kind of neglected the map, but as you'll see the, the map up there, you, you'll see by, and it's a bit of an eye chart, but you can see the one, uh, if I can point to it or. This is, if you can see my.
And this is the old highway road uh north location. And you can see the sound map, if you recall, that we looked at at the work session, uh, fell way short of highway nine, or I ninety-four that we were looking at. And you can see now that it actually kind of extends beyond I ninety-four. So we're really gaining some really good coverage of, in that area. And uh as well as this location right here on Granite View Road, there's somewhere in that location that it also extends almost out to I ninety-four, an area really there that isn't developed currently. But it's much better than what it was with just the four. And so I just wanted to make sure you, you understood what this map was, was telling you.
There, there was some talk about overlapping St. Cloud, uh Thirty-third Street. Were they going to place one out by tech out that way, or?
I believe, um, in talking with um the emergency manager for Sterns County, I believe there is uh plans to try to add more sirens. I don't know that the exact location has been determined, so it's hard to know if um we will uh get any coverage from that. There, like I said, there are, there are probably um a total of five sirens that, that Wade Park actually, that are St. Cloud sirens that overlap with our community to the north and to the east. I would say the area of, of uh Aspen Springs, Willow Creek, Willow Pond, uh, does experience some, um, uh, benefit, if you will.
There's overlap.
From the St. Cloud sirens and, and so when, and that's what I, I took some, I took some of that into consideration just given our proximity, um, that um the gaps being in the west out by the Grand Depot area and then to the, to the very southern tip, if you will, of Wade Park. By adding those two, um, is, it, it provides really good coverage for the entire city.
Honestly, if. Well, oh, first, I'll make the motion to purchase the one that's in the budget. So that's a motion.
You're second?
I'll second that.
Um, further discussion, Bill?
Yeah, I'd also like to add too, and me and Dave are looking, if you look at your map, the Zabinski Farms, the two there, um, they're outside that green area. And, and part of our thoughts are twofold here, if you wait with moving the Belclaire one till next year, we can play with this map a little bit and see where that lies out, but I don't think you're going to still get out to, to the Zabinskis. So our thoughts were, is whenever there was future development out in that, that little strip along Highway Six, or County Road Six, that that you could require the developer to do under their cost at that time. So then you would end up with a complete coverage of the whole, the whole city. So if you're looking at that map and see that's outside the green area, it, you're probably never going to get it out there. And we would just deal with it at that time.
Sure. All in favor?
I.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
I'll make a motion to purchase the second one under uh our reserves.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Yes.
Four to one.
I'd just like to have things in the budget.
Yeah, I understand, I, if.
If you're going to do one, you might as well.
Well, and, and for that cause, I think.
No, that's not logic.
All right, uh, what do we got left, consider purchase, oh, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. I don't have anything except, uh, tonight was our first night to have the public input at six fifteen at our work session. And at six fifteen, no one was there, so uh there was no public input tonight at the uh work session. Shawna?
I would like to thank everybody involved with the Family Fun Fest. It was a very nice success. Attended most everything that was going on, so it was great. Thank you.
Yeah, job well done with nice weather, so.
Yes.
Shawna?
I ju, I'd first like to thank the Public Works and C N L Excavating in Mendat to uh a job well done on a um water main break on Highway twenty-three, probably one of the busiest roads in town. Um, to have that um actually excavated, repaired and uh back up and paved in twelve hours is amazing to me, just, it takes a long time just to get those contractors lined up to do work, but to be able to do that on a, on an extreme situation like that was very impressive. And I know the man over there worked twenty-four hours to get that done, so I thank you, Bill, for, for your work and your staff's work and everyone else that was involved. The only other thing is, is that I'm curious as to which date in July you'd like to do a um council meeting. We uh, because we had a marathon day with work session in that, we did fulfill a lot of our um obligations for things that we have up. Uh, there is no planning commission meeting in um June, so that leaves us open. I think we were looking at the potential of either doing the tenth or the fifteenth.
Eighth or fifteenth.
I'm sorry, the eighth or the fifteenth, I do know the mayor's out of town on the fifteenth. Is there a preference, and if we don't have anything, we may not have a meeting either, so that's the other side to this, because I'm not sure at this point what items we have, I, we'll see, I, Terry might have an item. Design.
Well, you could plan for the eighth and there's nothing, we don't need it.
Let me do it for the fifteenth then.
Oh. Okay, change order.
July eighth, all right. All right. Eighth work. Get it done overall. Okay.
All right, so next council meeting will be July eighth. That's all I have.
Anybody, Terry, Bill, John, chief?
You know, I'll just add too, I, I thought the uh Family Fun Fest was, was very good. Um, I, I think probably the attendance at the parade on Thursday night was as large a crowd as I've seen in a long time. Uh, there were several bands involved, I, I just thought it was a, a, a great evening, of course, we were lucky, it was a beautiful weather, but the car show, uh, as many cars as I've seen, I, I think just the Thursday, Friday format, uh, from my perspective, we had no problems with, with the P D and it was tough with the uh Second Street South being closed, we had construction on seventy-five and Division and we closed Third Street North for the parade, so tough getting through Wade Park on last Thursday, but recognized the police department too for the job they did and, and uh, and, and helping with the, the crowd control and the parade and stuff, so.
All right, thanks, Carla?
Right.
Well, Mr. W J O N.
Any comments?
Any comments? I mean, this is.
I hope you get the name of the amphitheater.
This, hey, this, this, this is your opportunity to be a star. This is it, it may never happen again.
Well, I'm just being acknowledged by you guys.
We're your favorite community, we know.
All right, we are adjourned at seven thirty-seven.